So we have on board Director Rollins, who will yield this presentation. Is there anything or any insight that you would like to share? Councilman Morgan, prior to Director Rollins making his presentation?
No ma'am, I think we can get into it.
Thank you very kindly. Director Rollins, if you please, share your name and position just for the records.
Director Rollins, Memphis Police Director.
We yield the floor to you.
Thank you Chairwoman. So this is a presentation of not just homicides, but crime. Daily crime. So as of October 11th, daily crime was down actually 8.13%. The areas that we are up were aggravated assault, auto theft, burglary non-residential, homicide of 41%, murder of 50%, and theft of vehicle parts. Crime that are down, burglary residential down 33%, burglary business down 17.9%, larceny down 10%, rape down 13.8%, robbery business down 20.7%, robbery individual down 15.6%, and carjacking down 3%. So there's a mixed bag overall good, but obviously we're concerned about the aggravated assaults to include aggravated assault DB and the homicides and murders. Operations, we remember we started Operation Relentless Pursuit in December and it continued on to August of 2020. We did Operation Spring Cleaning, and I'll tell you about that, but there were 518 arrests, 136 gun seizures. And then with the Department of Justice, we moved into Operation Legend, named after Legend Taloferro, who was killed in Kansas. So the big story is really about guns. There are more shootings, more guns, and more homicides. The good news is gun seizures are up 18% when you look at January through September. Gun arrests are up 34%. But what's troubling, if you think, if you look at it, we seized 3,000 guns year to date. Juvenile arrested on gun charges are up 17.9% and adult arrests are up 35.8%. So when you think about 191 juveniles have been arrested for carrying guns, and adults are arrested, 2,100 adult arrests for a total of 2,366 is rather alarming. You know, when we talk about the guns, we're not just talking about pistols. We're talking about high caliber, high magazine capacity pistols and rifles, AK-47 type and AR-15 type. Here are some guns from previous operations we conducted, but we think that when you look at the amount of firepower that's on the street, it is producing higher number of casualties and more severe casualties or wounds, which has led to an increase in our homicide rate. More guns. Operation Spring Cleaning, that lasted up April 11th this year through June 13th. 518 arrests, 136 guns seized. So our members of Special Operations Uniform Patrol did a good job, recovered quite a bit of drugs and, you know, 136 guns off the street. And here were some of the guns from Spring Cleaning. Here's our, some of the guns from Operation Legend, and you see the same pattern. A bunch of AR-15s, AK-47s, this is a hundred round drum magazine, drugs are prevalent. And we think that the drugs, the guns, the gangs, to include domestic violence, has led to an increase in homicides. Firearms. So if we look at over the years, and we know that theft from motor vehicles, the number of guns stolen from motor vehicles has drastically increased from 2013 to 2019, where in 2019, 1,084 were stolen from vehicles. That's good news because it's down from 1273 in 2018. Memphis police officers recovered 3,300 guns. So, but in 2020, we've recovered 3,032 guns. So that's good news. Officers are still working hard. More on these types of guns, high capacity AR-15. This is a hundred round drum magazine. So we're really alarmed at the type of guns and the high number of guns that are out there. Violent crime. We had been, been able to reduce violent crime quite a bit the last two years, but unfortunately, year to date, violent crime is up 10% as of 10/11/20. I told you about the aggravated assault DBs. We know that the aggravated assaults, and when we talk about domestic violence, contributes to an increase in homicides. So aggravated assault DBs since COVID are up around 12%. Reported incidents of domestic violence are down, but we think that a lot of that is attributed to COVID, where victims cannot get away from their abusers. To give you some information on countywide crime, countywide major violent crime, according to Operation Safe Community Report, is up 17%. Major property crime was down, is down 11.6%. So again, good news on major property crime, not so good news on the major violent crime. That's Shelby County. When you look at Shelby County excluding Memphis, violent crime, major violent crime is up 12%, major property crime down 6%. And when you look at Memphis, Memphis major violent crime is up 17%, major property crime is down 12%. So when you compare the two, I wanted us to understand that crime is up all across the county, not just in Memphis, but Memphis is leading the reduction in major property crime. But again, we have to address the violent crime. This is a graph of our Part 1 crime. This is 2006. I know that a lot of people say crime has never been this high, but when we look back in 2006, that is truly when crime had never been that high. The red line is 2019, so we ended 2019 in a, in a good position. Violent crime was reduced by 13% 17 through 2019. And those are the numbers, but that we're doing good prior to COVID. And that's kind of what the bar graphs look in 17, 18, and 19. Interstate shootings. Heard a lot about interstate shootings. There've been 63 interstate shootings, 41 since Memorial Day. And now we'll get specifically into the murders. And I will start off thinking and remembering the, the children that have been victims of homicide this year, and I will share a few stories with you. I did want to bring attention to an opinion that the DA Amy Wark wrote, teen offenders need immediate intervention. You know, it was a, it was a sad story about a 16-year-old that the Memphis Police Department had arrested a number of times for various crimes. Unfortunately, the child consistently got out of, out of juvenile court. And the last time the 16-year-old got out of the juvenile court, he was involved in a, a crime and unfortunately lost his life. And so I think this is a great article. If you have not read it, it is worth reading so we can contemplate what we can do to save more of our children. This is what I sent out to the clergy, and I will just kind of reiterate this, that as we reimagine policing, we need to reimagine how we intervene in the lives of young people. And we've all heard the challenge, and we understand the need to intervene in young people's lives by mentoring, tutoring, et cetera. We all understand the challenge that gangs, guns, drugs, and domestic violence pose to Memphis youth, but we have not done enough. Now we face a global pandemic, an uncertain economic situation, social unrest, demand to reform and reimagine policing, virtual school in isolation, and a contentious presidential election. So to give you some, some insight on our homicides, you know, you know, this is a community problem, and it is not just a youth problem, because as we look at the numbers, the victim's average age is 37. The largest group, 18 to 33 years old. The suspect's average age for solved homicides is 30 years old. So this group, 18 to 37, 33, is a group that we really, really need to focus on, and then I'll talk about the children. When this message went out, 20, you know, we had 27 children had been victims of child homicide. 21 were murdered, two were justifiable homicides, four accidental shootings. Of the 21 murders, at that time, we arrested or identified 12, and nine were ongoing investigations. To date, 28 children have died violently. And again, you know, we are saddened at this, but again, this is a community problem, especially while we, the police department, don't have access to the children like we used to before COVID. Here's a tragic story I want to talk to you about, an adult. Three-year-old accidentally shoots her dad. This was Wednesday, October the 14th, 2020. Three-year-old accidentally shot and killed her father. Child was a rear seat passenger in a vehicle where an adult rear seat passenger left a loaded 9mm semi-automatic handgun unattended. The three-year-old picked up the weapon in a discharge, striking her father in the back of the head, killing him instantly. The adult rear passenger admitted to leaving the gun unattended, and he was charged with reckless homicide and unlawful possession of a weapon. And he was an acquaintance with the deceased. And this story has played out over and over again, not just with children, but with Memphis. We know that we tragically lost two Memphis firefighters, but this is, on August 24th, we did arrest a young man who was charged with first-degree murder and murder and perpet- perpetration of especially aggravated robbery and criminal attempt especially aggravated robbery. We do remember both of the firefighters we lost this year, Courtney Anderson and Mark Bond. And the reason why I'm bringing this to your attention, because as I was updating the presentation, we got word that the 19-year-old was indicted in the August shooting death of off-duty Memphis firefighter Courtney Anderson. And it just, you know, was timely to show that, again, you know, the, the issue of murder in Memphis, homicides in Memphis, is a community problem, not just a government and a law enforcement problem. So homicides are not just up in the, in the Memphis area, they're up across the United States. And we, this was an article from the New York Times, there was an alarming increase of homicides, where you see 2016 to the 2019 average, and then this year where homicides have skyrocketed. Here are some of the cities, and the bar graph spells it, but I'll name the cities. Murders are up in Atlanta, Boston, Charlotte, Chicago, Cincinnati, Dallas, Denver, Houston, Indianapolis, Jacksonville, Kansas City, Las Vegas, Los Angeles, Louisville, Memphis, Miami, Minneapolis, Nashville, New Orleans, New York, Oakland, Philadelphia, Portland, San Antonio, Seattle, St. Louis, Toledo, and Washington DC. And I think the only major city, or one of the few major cities, who have not seen an increase in, in homicides at the time of this article, was Baltimore. Guns of murder suspects. It is guns, 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 and guns in the hands of individuals that should not have guns. And again, very high-capacity magazines, very high caliber guns, AR-15s, AK-47 variants on the streets. These are guns from 1181 South Bellevue, Sunday, April 24, 2020. This is 599 Cedar Crest, another gun from Cedar Crest. So let's get to the, the, what you asked about. As of yesterday, we had 219 murders, and unfortunately, it changed overnight, and we're now at 220. So murders are up 50% when you look at 2019, where we had 146. A month to date, they're up 7%. Again, this changed, but yesterday, it was even, even justifiable homicides are up, where we've had 19 justifiable homicides compared to 14. Now, when this chart was done a few weeks ago, we had 17, now we have 19 justifiables, and we had 205 murders. Well, now we have 220 murders, but we've had zero fatal officer-involved shootings. And I know we spend a lot of time focusing on law enforcement, but again, it's time to refocus our attention on our efforts in the community. And that means people coming forward, telling us what happened, and who the suspects are, calling Crime Stoppers, but also trying to prevent these murders and homicides by intervening early on when you know there is a conflict. And here's why I bring that up. Gang violence contributes to over half, 58% of the homicides. So when we look at the solved homicides, that's when we know what happened. Gang violence is alarming. Almost 80% of the victims knew the suspects in the known or the solved homicides, and 21% of the suspects were repeat offenders, meaning that they had some other type of violent crime arrests in their past. Gangs, guns, drugs, domestic violence. And again, it's very difficult for us to protect people from people that they know, that they hang out with, especially when they're hanging around violent people and violent places. If we look at, when we had 213 homicides in 1993, which was our hot until 228 in 2016, we know that at the end of September, we went to, we broke the 228 and went to 229. A few weeks ago, we're at 236, and today we're at 248. So we have definitely surpassed the 2016 homicides. And so the graph, I think, tells an interesting story. We often talk about staffing, and when we had the most number, the highest number of police officers, is where we saw the lowest number of homicides. We see that there was some stability somewhere around 1998, probably it's around 2014. And 2014 is when we lost those 400 police officers, and then you saw a skyrocketing of homicides and violent crime in Memphis. These are murders by station, and you can see that there are nine stations in the city. Austin P is up north, Raines and Ridgeway in the south, and then we have North Bane, Crump Station, Tillman Airways, Appleland Farms, and Mount Morat in the middle. I do want to bring your attention to this area here around the Lamar Corridor, where you kind of see a cluster in a line of bodies. So if there's any area that we want to concentrate in on, I think it's around the Lamar Corridor. That's a heat map. It just kind of shows you more concentration of where our homicides are occurring. We also broke this down by council district. I think one, at least one council member expressed interest. And council district four is the highest, followed by district six and seven. That's a pie chart showing the same. And this is the council districts broken out the same map, just presented in a different way. And here's the heat map per council district. And back to children. We see that, you know, the, the number of children killed this year is alarming, and we see the breakdown where more children have died in Rain Station than any other precinct. Now, we did talk about reimagining police. I wanted to redirect you to the reimagine Memphis TN.gov. And I want to go back to the article that Shelby County District Attorney General Amy Wark wrote, and the question for all of us in Memphis, not just the police department, not just council, but all of our civic organizations, our clergy, our nonprofits is, you know, what are we willing to do to save lives? And with that, Chairwoman, that is the end of my presentation, pending any questions from council.
Thank you very kindly, Director. Three slides ago, you said something about district four had the highest. Could you review that, please? I didn't grasp all of that information, but of course, it brought up my radar.
Yes ma'am. At least one council member asked us about, you know, their district and what homicides look like per council district. So we tried to break it out to where it's easy to read, and I did share this presentation with Ms. Hyman, if she has not shared it with you. And so if you see the, the darkest number, district four being the highest, followed by district six and seven, and then three, five, and one and two were the lowest.
What are the particulars of that? Were, are they burglaries, homicides? What brings that number to its highest?
So let's, we'd have to do some, we'd have to do some more research to, to, to research them per council district, but we've been studying our homicides for, since 2016. So in 2016, the University of Memphis did a, a study where we reached our, our highest of 228, and there were three factors. Exposure to domestic violence. We saw that there was a, when, you know, kids were learning, we talk about, you know, where are kids learning to be violent? Well, it's at home, through exposure to domestic violence, neglect, abuse, et cetera. So exposure to DB was just, it just jumped out as one of those main factors that was statistically significant. The other factor was the percent of high school dropouts. So if you go back to the heat map, we look at the, the, the murders by station, and we hadn't, you know, looked at this as deep as we did in 2016, but I would almost take an educated guess and say that in these areas are your highest areas where individuals are being exposed to domestic violence, there's a high percentage of high school dropouts, and the third factor that the U of M discovered was transient, where people have been moving from place to place, they don't have relationships, communities, lack continuity, lack cohesiveness. And again, I, I would, I would ask that our criminologists look at, you know, our homicides from 16, 17, 18. There've been a number of, of, of predictions of to why there's been an increase nationwide. We know there's been an explosion of gun sales across the United States. We know that the anxiety levels are up, and that people appear to be shooting first and asking questions later. We know that a, a number of guns continue to be stolen despite the number of operations we've done, and a lot of individuals with bail reform, with individuals being released early, that we have seen a, a number of individuals reoffend. So I think this year is such an odd year. We did see an increase after, nationwide, after the, the horrific death of George Floyd and the protests that, that followed, where groups were arming themselves in a greater way. And so COVID unrest, you know, the economic situation, uncertainty about the future, and definitely proliferation of guns have contributed, in my opinion, but we don't know exactly what has happened in any particular precinct or any particular council district, it's just a, a number of these factors that should be studied by criminologists.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Morgan, you in the queue?
Thank you. Councilman Warren, were you in the queue before me, or is that the previous issue?
I was in the queue, but go ahead, I'll go after you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Director Rollins. How does the solve rate in those homicides compare this year to previous years when the numbers were lower?
So, and, and actually, this is a national issue. We've been talking within major city chiefs where, where we see incidents of unrest or a more, I guess, discussion of distrust between police and community, that definitely impacts our solve rate. So we're, we're around 58% this year. We're slightly above the national average. We really want to be in a, in a much higher percentile rate. So we have seen an impact to our solve rate, where we, 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 we don't know exactly what's happening. We just know that people in the community, and we really rely on, you know, someone always knows who did a homicide. It's very unusual that there's no witness or someone is not, has no knowledge of what happened, and we do think that there's less cooperation, and we've seen a decline in people coming forward. I always think back to the horrific death of Leila Washington, where it took two years where someone held on to that information, and finally, two years later, came forward and gave us the tip that we needed to bring justice for the family. And we're still have not gotten, got information on, you know, two of the homicides that happened earlier this year, although the reward was pushed up to $25,000 during, for Operation Legend. And hopefully, we, you know, get someone to come forward on the, the death of Mr. Laquon Boy, and Mrs., Mrs. Ashwin, Ashlyn Luckett, that we lost in January.
And I think it's generous to say that we were anticipating being stretched thin across different investigative divisions, whether it be domestic violence or homicide or organized gang unit, just the number of investigators we had. And then on top of that, we have a 50% increase in the number of cases they're handling. How do you adjust for that? Because we, we haven't seen any, you know, budget resolutions or anything like that, any amendments. How have you adjusted for that in balancing patrol and overtime and these investigative units that have been hit extremely hard this year?
Well, COVID has presented a number of challenges. You know, so if you think about today, we've almost had, you know, 700, no, over, over 700 employees that have either been quarantined or tested positive for quote COVID. So we've been severely impacted by a department that is grossly under staff. So all of our bureaus are under staff. Colonel Good is owned from the homicide unit, and he's really been working hard, you know, bringing together multi-agency gang unit, the, the homicide unit, the organized crime, violent crimes unit, and also some of our federal partners have been working. So Colonel Good, if you can come in and comment on that, and also if you want to talk about the solve rate.
Yes, so thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair, and other council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. We have kind of made a concerted effort to reach out to all of our local partners, whether it be the bureaus within the Memphis Police Department, as well as Shelby County Sheriff's Department, multi-agency gang unit. We've also reached out, informed partnerships with some of our federal, federal agencies, federal partners, such as the FBI, ATF, Homeland Security, to kind of, you know, take a collective look at not only the unsolved homicides, but knock on wood, any future homicides. So we, we've created this kind of collaborative unit that, you know, every single day are working in collaboration with the homicide bureau and the violent crime bureau to address some of these homicides and, and get that solve rate up. And hopefully, you know, we, we'll see a decline in the number of unfortunate new cases that we get. As far as the clearance rate is concerned, I mean, the 58% As far as the clearance rate is concerned, I mean, uh, the fifty-eight percent, like the director said, is. Above the national average, but it, it is nowhere near where we would like for it to be. Uh, quite certainly Memphis in past years have always, uh, prided itself in having, uh. One of the highest homicide clearance rates in the country. If you go back just prior to two thousand and sixteen. You probably see the homicide clearance rate, you know, uh, pretty high. You know, probably maybe fifteen to twenty percent higher than what it is today. Uh, with everything that, that the director mentioned, all of the challenges that are before us with COVID. And pandemic and, you know, the personnel being as, as low as it is. I mean, we are, uh. Taking a yeoman's approach and trying to address some of these things. So. Um, it's a daunting task, but it's, it's not something that we are going to shy away from. And we're going to face it head on and, uh, we, we're going to do the best thing, best that we can. Our homicide investigators are working. As my grandmother used to say, my mother used to say, from can to can't. And unfortunately they're, they're going from scene to scene. So. Uh, we have to kind of figure out a way and think outside the box and maximize the resources that we have. Uh, that would, that would have the biggest impact, uh, positive impact on these homicides. And especially the non-fatal shootings. We also begin to concentrate on the non-fatal shootings because. Absent, uh, the Regional One Hospital, which is one of the best level one trauma centers in the country. Uh, I think that it is my opinion that these homicides will be exponentially higher. Uh, so we are very fortunate there. So, and we feel that, that if, if, if we concentrate on more efforts. Into the non-fatal shootings. To address those before they become homicides, uh, we're looking at it from that perspective. So. And again, just remember, we are using the same resource, the same, uh, number of, of bodies, the same number of investigators and police officers. To try to address, uh, in essence, this epidemic of homicides that we are experiencing in this city.
Thank you very kindly, uh, Mr. Goods. Uh, thank you for enlightening us with that additional information. If you don't mind, please give us your name and position just for the records.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Darren Goods. I'm a Colonel with the Memphis Police Department. I am the Commander of the Investigative Services Bureau.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, Councilman Warren, if we can end with you so that we can. Uh, get to the MLDW committee meeting and possibly guitar break on time at twelve noon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as all of you remember, uh, when we first sat on the council, I gave everyone a book called Bleeding Out. Uh, it talked about the need for having a multi-agency task force involved in dealing with this problem of. Violent crime, trying to get the would-be shooters not to be an actual shooter. Uh, and I think, uh, both, uh, uh, Colonel and, uh, Chief Rollins discussed the importance of trying to get in there and. Uh, stop the next shooting. Uh, we had, uh, a meeting this week, uh, with a number of people, including the district attorney. Uh, talking about one of her programs, which is called, I believe, uh, targeted deterrence. Uh, we're looking, uh, hopefully to move that up from, uh, group to two groups of twelve. To two groups of fifty, uh, individuals that are in this targeted deterrence where they're sort of. Definitely given more services, uh, made known that what's going to happen is. You know, if you do step out of line, you're going to be going back to jail. But if you need something, you call us and we're going to try to help you. So I think what you, we should expect to see hopefully coming from. The mayor and from other organizations is a request to figure out how we can actually fund. This overarching task force that's going to be, uh, essentially directed by our Chief of Police. Uh, in his designee. So I think we should be looking for that coming in the near future. Uh, it's definitely something that they need to do. Realize that there's hamstrung and handicapped because of the lack of personnel that they have. And we're really going to have to do everything we can to try to help them get more people, uh, on. Yeah, in the police department to help them be able to do this. Uh, remember if they've got seven hundred people that have been out because of COVID and they're already down. It really puts, uh, the onus on them to have to work even harder and I'm worried that'll burn out. So expect to see more coming on this. I think people are looking at it from, uh, the police department and the Department of Corrections. Uh, and our sheriff's department. So. I hope that, that the chief will be able to bring us some definitive recommendations coming from the mayor and coming from his department. As it relates to this task force for violent crime. Because this is a huge issue. It's ten million dollars a murder. And, you know, if we can stop the murder rate and remember the violent crime, it's just because they're not killed. If they're made. They're not going to be, no one's going to be working for the rest of their life. So it, it's a huge economic drain on our city and it's a, a terrible travesty. For these young people who've been raised in horrible situations, victims of pleistocene stress disorder. Not to have the support they need to keep them from being involved and being caught in, into this. I guess culture that allows them to kill each other in such a manner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you, Councilman Morgan, for bringing this before the council and the committee meeting. Thank you, Director Rollins, for enlightening us with this wonderful information. And in the near future, I am interested in hearing an update on gang violence. Uh, ident- being able to identify gangs, being able to identify gang graffiti. Uh, just something that we should know being in our own communities, how to identify. Uh, instances and know how to come up with possible resolutions and being able to communicate with police in the community regarding it. I appreciate you today. If there's nothing further, this meeting stands adjourned.